Head and give. I'm not.
Yeah, I think I had to. I need to add that I didn't have so many kids. Do it. I didn't have no idea. So, Ray Dawn, she had to know how to do it. Really, they. And then, Ben, I. He's landed. Oh, I just showed you. And then, I still try to. It's like a machine to. Now, I can't make it as cheap. I don't know. I don't know. Here, I don't know. So, let's. Oh, gee, I need to. Then, I get coconut county elections. So, recorders, he added. I know he is. I know. The name is. Be sure, and then. You need to. Then, no. Hey, hey, oh gee, gee, see. That I need to. Election day last week. Hey, ah. Ah, that is a good. That is. School district, the hospitals district. That he could do Grand Canyon, Williams. That he added. He got that is. But then, he could. Hey, presidential preference election. He bit. Hold this. Now, he do. We can. It's John, he March, when I. And it's at the. Call it, he call that I need to. It's John. Hey, could Washington, the United States President, he. Did we go, she did it. And I love it. She got Democrat or Republican. I did. Que, eh, that I key. A call. Do debate again, that I. A call. And then, I like it. A call. The presidential preference election. And then, it's an. They. A call. Did. A call. It was an. They do. It's John. Ah, don't they? August, be hard to see. Go, eh, yeah. A call. It's not that need to. A call. Yeah, did it. Primary election, gee, do. It's an. And they, gee, a call. Yeah, not that need to. It's John. Ah, don't they? I could. Nah, hold you. Try to. That I could. Nah, hold you. Go November, go two thousand twenty four. Can I have? Eh, it's. How go it need to. Eh, general election, do. Eh, could. He got. I know. I do. It's John. He presidential preference election. She, niggie, eh, Joe, eh, Zanés, Joe, who had it. Eh, go Democrat. Eh, ah, ah, just. He need to. It's a. Ah, do. Ah, do Republican. And she hit the. Lo, she who had it. Eh, ah, Republican, she. It's a. Ah, do. Eh, ah, she did. Lo, she. It's a. Ah, do. Ah, do. Like, eh, independent, that is. Though nonparty, others. It's hot. Ah, who had it. Eh, do. It's a. Ah, do. Call it. Do. Ah, do. The. Do. Ah, do. Que, voter registration form. L'Anjanadi. Now, eh, do. Who had it. Eh, go. It's John. Que, L'Anjanadi. Now, though, that's. Sanid. Though, it's going to. Then, just senior citizen. Ah, that's. Do. Anjanadi. Now, a call. Eh, do. Who had it. Eh, go. It's John. Voter registration form. It can. I know. On the. He. Ah, do. Ah, online, though. Coconut County. Arizona, that girl. Eh, it's the elections. Eh, it's the. Ah, ah, just. Don't. It's. It's. Though you can. Go ahead and register. It's John. Eh, yeah. Hazy. Hazy, gee, la. Oh, it. Go. Eh, do. That's. I know. Nah, go. If you're resident change, go. A call. You need to re-register. Do. It's John. Have you. About, see. On a. So, Juan, I had to. Gee, la. Oh, it. In go. Joe, eh, yeah. You just need to call in. Eh, do. Be sure. That all. Now, do. It's John. Ah, do. Did. Presidential preference election. It need. Joe, eh, ah, eh, do. And don't. How had it. Eh, go. Eh, what. And then, eh, February, be. It's a. Yeah. Not in. Go. Oh, call. Now, he do. We can. Eh, need. It's. Ah, who. Now, the net. Do. It's John. Last day to register to vote is February twenty. Two thousand twenty four. Do. It's John. Ah, do. It's. All. About. Say, then, I'll send. Joe, eh, bah. Hal. Just do. Now, he do. We can. Nay, it's a. Yeah. Not in. Ah, la. Oh, you. Call. Eh, about. Ah, no. Send. Voting begins February twenty first. Do. It's John. It's the. Ah, do. Early voting mobile days. They, ninni, get. It's the. They. Since, do. Need. Like, oh, it's John. And it's the. Could. Eh, do. We have a trailer that we will be going around for early voting. Registration. So, I had. Eh, do. Registration, if you want to vote. Register to vote. It's the trailer. They. Since, do. At the. Ah, just. Go. It's John. Ah, do. It need. She, ninni, gee. The last day to request early voting, eh, yeah. March eighth. Do. It's John. Ah, do. The last day to early vote is March fifteenth. Eh, do. About. Said it. It's. Ah, no. Eh, need. It's. Ah, who. Now, the net. Where's. Change. It's. It's. That. The. Call. It's John. Ah, do. Did. Bah. She. Now, gee, it's the. Ah, the. Now, big, it. Eh, the. Bang. Dah. Well, nah. And then, eh, eh, let. Page, eh, do. So, I hope. Sanid. K T. And eh, do. Ah, Nick. Flags, that eh, K T. And K F F. K A F F. Eh, are. Bang. Dah. Well, nah. It's John. Ah, do. Did. Did. Ah, so, ah, do. Information pamphlet. They, ninni, get. Need. It's. It. Do. It's the. Eh, did. Eh, gee, gee. The. Ask. Kid. Oh, it. Eh, go. The. B. Call. Do. Eh, she. Eh, gee. Post. Office. It's a. Ah, that. Oh, you. Be. At. This. Ben. It's. Nilla.
of agenda. Do I have a motion? Priscilla Benali? Second? Pearl Smith? Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, this agenda will be including the one or two resolution that they're still working on. Right? Okay. All right then, or any other resolutions we might come up with during the meeting. All those in favor, raise your hands? Oppose? Abstain? Okay, approval of agenda passes with twenty approvals, zero opposed, ten abstain. Approval of the last meeting minutes, October sixth, twenty twenty-three? Is posted right there on our chapter website? Does, hold on.
So I've been posting the last meeting minutes on the website. If you look on here, the website here that's posted, it will have the upcoming chapter meetings along with the planning meeting agenda. You'll just click on these icons and then you'll have today's meeting agenda as to what was passed during the planning meeting. It will not have the amended agenda as to what you guys see right now. But it does have the last planning meeting minutes and the last chapter meeting minutes. You guys are free to download all that and that is available online for your use.
Okay, and all the reports that come in from council delegate, the LDA, or any other reports that come in, it's all posted with that. So how do you want to do this? Do you want? Did you get that? Okay. So A with the last, the number three, but number four, Gishon, how do you want to treat that? Do you want a copy for your records or? How, I need a motion for it. Is in other words what I'm saying. Okay? Okay. Second? Okay. Okay, so the motion is made that we will proceed with the meeting. All those referred to the website to check their last meeting minutes for themselves. And if they want a copy, they can ask the administration to make them a copy due to preserving paper. So A upon request. Okay, so motion was made by Pearl Smith, second by Priscilla Benali. Questions, comments, concerns? Ateno Aya, all those approved, raise your hands. Raise them up high, says the cowboy. Oppose? Abstain? Okay, approval of the last meeting minutes passes with twenty-six approvals, zero opposed for abstain. Presentation, we already did the Coconina County Elections. AI dot presentation. Council Delegate Herman Daniels, are you online? Elsie, do you have a report for us? We do have the report, a report from Herman Daniels that is given to us and also from Elsie Smallcannon, the LDA. Yes? The report. We can read it to you. Elsie Gay, she's online, but as usual, she's probably listening to umpteen numbers of other meetings too. Or we can reserve time for them towards the end after the resolutions.
Good afternoon Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Elsie.
I'm sorry about that. Hi, everyone. That's it. Ya'te, she Elsie Smallcannon, she the LDA to Delegate Herman Daniels. I see, I just got off a call with a community member, so that's what I was doing. Ya'te da, Kueki, Council Delegate, his monthly report, ya' yin, the, Ashada. He's at a Hess meeting today in Chinli. One of the legislation that he's sponsoring for the university, Utah State University Facility, the Yokeido in Monument Valley. He's had to present his legislation for that and that's legislation number zero-two-five-zero dash twenty-three. Aya, beso, sesaniki, Aya, the Yokeid. And he's just asking for support from from chapters and from the people. The main reason is that I think the nearest facility for Utah State University is in Blanding and it's quite a ways for people to travel on Zado. For those like from Apikin, Shanto, Navajo Mountain. It's a vignette facility, the Yokeid, right there close by Monument Valley. Akuaiki School, High School, because Aniki, that's where they want to try to have this facility set up for that. Although, they're also saying that it's going to bring in employment for the people in the area, anybody that's choosing to utilize their degrees or to do teaching on that spectrum, that's where it's going to be at. But yet, it's been on a five-day comment period, November seventh. So anytime now for any of the, either the Nabekeet meetings or any special meetings issue, that'll go on to the agenda. But right now he's taking it through the various committees, like Hess meetings, although probably BNF and then BNF is for Budget and Finance. I don't have a Health, Education and Human Services Committee. Although, the other thing that he was also, that he also recently got approved was the Goulding's Property Purchase. A Kueki, October thirty-first, they had a signing ceremony on Halloween's Day out at Monument Valley. Gouldings. Like because Aniki A Purchase. So that it's, the money is generated there and all the revenue goes back to Navajo Nation. That's kind of like a job security for them. There were some other bids coming in from like China and international people. Hotsa, she money would have been going off internationally. And with that happening, it probably would have meant, you know, people being laid off and being replaced with other people of their choice. I know some people were not, were not happy with that, but I think in any case Goulding's Property Akuaiki has been there for the longest time. I think a lot of people are aware that some Western movies were made, you know. I think that place is coincided with John Wayne. So Goulding's Property, yeah. And then the other thing that was also approved was Legislation two-thirty-one dash twenty-three. False session, that, but approve, and that was to request some monies to help build housing for the Navajo Preparatory School in Farmington. A November second, that sign. Although, there was another one, Legislation number zero-two-four-zero dash twenty-three. Eight of Fall Session, that, fifty thousand, yeah, your kid, not from the UUF. Yeah, sorry about that. And the unreserved, undeserved fund balance. A for the Lexington Hotel Homeless Shelter. Wherever they need a place to stay, you know, that was something that they were working on. I'm sorry, I don't know where this Lexington Hotel is. I'm thinking it might be Farmington area too, so. Then there was an emergency legislation, zero-one-one-eight dash two-three. False session, that, the approval, and it was signed into law on November first. They, five million, six hundred and twenty-five dollars was approved to help with the college and Navajo Technical University. So, on the, oh, Jito Dog, they had their veterans appreciation dinner and Thanksgiving dinner. They were able to get some stuff going for their organizations, for the veterans. I'm sure it's Apikin is also doing that. And I think it's just really fortunate that businesses and organizations are coming together to help our veterans. They're enlisting and, you know. We just ask for their safe return. And the monthly report. I've been just forwarding information regarding any fiscal recovery funds updates. A dot chapters. Apikin, the business unit. They finally assigned a number, so. There's just some steps that need to be taken and hopefully a meeting takes place pretty soon regarding how to implement it quickly, deadlines next year. It's going to come really fast and I don't want the chapters to miss out on that. So we're trying really hard to get some meetings going with DCD and FRF Office. Proposals, that's what, that's going to be worked on. Although, trainings, oh, you last month. Cybersecurity. And I had to take some online courses for that and usually a majority of them had some quizzes at the end and you have to pass it, so I passed all of those. And then just some mandatory annual trainees as well, and that was a sexual harassment prevention and awareness training. I took that. And then just helping out community members. I'm helping a college student with some grant writing, so. Right before I got on the line, there was a community member from Shanto who needed some information and stuff like that. So that's what I was searching online to get numbers and referrals for them. So, letters, whoever needs help with that. And then, right now, this coming week, we have the P card packet deadline. Delegates, whatever they use on their business card, reconciliation. The deadline for that is Thursday, so we have to get all of these in and I'll probably be asking for meeting documents if I don't have that on file already. And then just making sure that all the documents are in order and then having the delegate go and sign off on expense sheets and stuff like that. Other than that, that's what's keeping me busy a lot and, you know, I'm calling in from home to do the question. You know, although I stay home. Luckily, it's not COVID, but it's still among us and I just really want to encourage everyone to take care of themselves. Although, you know, look over each other and I just want to say thank you to Apikin. You know, you guys have been really, really welcoming and, you know. You know, you're moving forward with everything and I think, you know, I think two out of the four chapters here that I really work closely with, you guys are one of the top ones that are really up there with getting any reports, any projects going and, you know, you get the community involved with all of it. Thanksgiving, though, Christmas, just, no, I just really want to wish everyone an early happy holidays and and just take care of each other. And our contact numbers are on those monthly reports. So our email and our phone numbers, let back to you Chair, thank you.
Hello? Testing? Testing, testing.
I can hear you Chair.
Thank you, Elsie. Testing? Testing? Testing, testing, testing. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Thank you, Elsie, for that report. If they have any questions, they can probably get ahold of Herman. And also, the report is on the website too, so you can read it there. And like before, if you want a recopy of it, you can ask at the administration to have them print it out for you. Those of you who haven't gone up? Does Mom Alva have it? Okay. All right then. Well, go ahead and move on. Thank you, Elsie, for giving us the report.
Could I ask a question very quickly?
We still have a chapter meeting all the way to the end. Kadeya, grazing official. I guess when he comes back, where did he go? Did you sign in for it? The only thing I ask is don't just sign in, grab a plate and then go. You need to participate in the chapter meeting, thank you. Are they grazing official?
No report? Yeah? Then. Testing, testing. Testing. Oh, okay. Everything is done as far as the grazing thing is. Now and then, brand, for sale, catching wild cows, wild bulls. Lot of them are just running around without no brand. Although, we were planning. Get, get our wild cows. We haven't really got it scheduled. All we ask you is to take care of your livestock throughout the winter. Make sure you have enough feed. Four times a year, you get them shots, a black lady. Aya, your livestock's got to have that. This is your grazing meeting. Resolution that retains to the grazing, all that. Wednesday, permit is meeting. Aya, we don't do, need, actual anything like permit. We don't do those, we just give you the port. We go through some rulings, if you have any question, anything, anything about grazing. So it Thursday. You usually bring something to eat or just a refreshment or something like that. So, Aya. So, take care of them. Because it takes a lot of water, the feet. So, take care of them. You know, ensure that you have enough feed for it. There's some other meetings. Wondorat, they have a training for grazing official, no, without no. I don't know what's going on from Wondorat. We're not ready to go over there. So, we're not going to go. I mean, Thursday, next Monday. We don't do no business. Reports, Aya, all eighteen chapters. Other interaction with District two, one, two and three. So, a lot of people are calling from Shanto. So, I'm glad we did ours. So, when we do schedule on it. Make sure. No, they'll give you the schedule, so I usually have it here. So that way you'll know when the schedule is, your time schedule is. Thank you.
Thank you, that's for the grazing official report. Kadeya, we're going to go ahead and go down to Order Business. No old business, but new business, under new business, we have the first one.
TBK two-zero-two-three-dash-three-one-seven-zero-zero-one, accepting and approving the October two thousand twenty-three budget report. As you guys all know that it's all in the win system, so you have the opportunity to review that. Number one, general funds activity were two thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and seventeen cents. Number two is personality travel is twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. Number three is trust funds and land claims, which is negative five hundred and twelve dollars and twenty cents. Summer youth employment, which is two thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Housing discretionary funds is seventeen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Number ten is local governance at grant, which is one thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Chapter official stipend, which is negative two hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. Scholarship general funds is three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Scholarship claims is three thousand nine hundred Scholarship claims is $3,993. PEP fund is $26,939.61. Veterans is $3,988.78. Emergencies $23,331.37. Navajo sales tax, which is $10,918.79. Thirty-four, which is the agricultural infrastructure fund, which is $13,478.47. The unhealthy food tax is $102.90, bringing a subtotal of $127,028.14.
Okay, a whole budget. So do I have a motion? Pearl motions. Pearl Smith, second, Priscilla Benali. Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, Vernon? Do you have a question or do you want to explain something or? Yeah, they already approved to add resolution. So just send it over and we can put it on here. Okay, okay. All right, I had none to do with this resolution. Okay, questions, comments, concerns? I call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, opposed? Abstain? So it's forty. Okay. So it's three. Oh, no, two. Okay, TBK 2023-317-001 passes with forty approval, zero opposed, two abstain. Number two.
Number two is TBK 2023-317-002. Accepting and approving the monthly cash receipt deposits for October 2023 in the amount of $893.91, sponsored by the chapter administration.
Okay, motion? Okay, Priscilla Sosi and Pearl Smith. Questions, comments, concerns? I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands, please. Okay, opposed? Abstain? Okay, TBK 2023-1317-002 passes with twenty-eight approval, zero opposed, fourteen abstain. Number three.
TBK 2023-317-003, approving and supporting the general wage adjustment for the chapter manager. Twenty-three sixty-five, approving retro pay back. Pay going back to October 1st, 2023. Adopting the CE salary schedule as amended and adopted by the Navajo Nation. Sponsored by the chapter officials and administration.
Motion? Priscilla Sosi? And Priscilla Benali, I'll put as second. Questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead. No. Because he's already a permanent employee.
This one again is the salary increase. They have the general wage adjustment for every year. This one is to accommodate that increase by the Navajo Nation. Navajo Nation did a scheduled increase on everybody's salary. So this one here is to match Navajo Nation's salary. This way, he's in compliance with Navajo Nation policy and procedures.
Go ahead, Priscilla. Okay, hold on. Pearl? Okay. Your answer was?
Okay, so as defined, again, a memo was sent out in September 2023. It's the fiscal year 2024, new salary schedules. According to that, basically, the nomination is, this is the previous salary schedule, which Vernon has been operating under. Navajo Nation approved this memo stating that they're moving the salary schedule from BX to CE. This is the new salary schedule, which is added. And again, the verbiage is on the resolution that has it saying going from from CE. And we're adopting the CE schedule. As adopted by the Navajo Nation. So that is the memorandum that we're utilizing.
Okay, so. The resolution, approving and supporting the general wage adjustment. We had laid out a prevailing rate since it was from the president's office for Navajo Nation. And what we're doing as a certified chapter is matching that, the Navajo Nation. Yeah, and it's backdated back to October 1st, which is what the resolution says. So looking at the resolution, finding out this information with you, the people, does the resolution say what it says? Do we need to change it? So what I'm saying is, when you read the resolution, is it kosher with what's going to happen? The way it says it? So leave it the way it is. Okay. All right then. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Because this was before October. Because it wasn't started with that wage until after October has gone. The budget wasn't passed at that time. It was going, and then all of a sudden, it was like going back and forth, back and forth. So this is what is gonna justify why the retro pay. Because budgets weren't approved. A lot of chapters went through this whole thing. So that's what we had to, they had to do. So we're gonna do the same. Because this dates it and retro pays it back to October 1st. Okay. So no more questions, no more comments. I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. Opposed? Okay, one. Abstain? Okay, TBK 2023-317-003 passes with twenty-six approval, one opposed, fifteen abstain. Number four.
Number four, TBK 2023-317-004, approving and supporting staff and official travel to the FY24 Reservation Economic Conference Summit on March 10th, 2024, and two March 15th, 2024, sponsored by the chapter administration.
Motion? Pearl Smith? Second? Randana Savage. Questions, comments, concerns? No questions, comments, or concerns? Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. Opposed? Opposed? Abstain? TBK 2023-317-004 passes with twenty-nine approval, zero opposed, thirteen abstain. Number four? Number five?
TBK 2023-317-005, accepting and supporting the student financial assistance to the eligible applicant in the amounts requested.
Student financial assistance. Student financial assistance. Okay, he's gonna put it up there so that you can show that that's a resolution. Number five is on the student financial resolution. There's the resolution. Motion?
TBK 2023-317-005, accepting and supporting for student financial assistance to the eligible applicants in the amounts requested. Sponsored by the Chapter Administration.
We do have one financial assistance application that was turned in, so that's what that one is. Motion by Pearl Smith? Second by Pashala Benali? Questions, comments, concerns? I don't think they have applied, they have applied for one before, so I think this might be a first time, a first time request, so. No. Yeah. Yep. The only thing that's required of the applicant is that they do give us a transcript back to us to show that they completed, and so that we can close the books on that one, on the assistance that they receive. And then, at that time, what Earl usually does is just say that we accept that they completed their schooling, their semester, and then, A, it helps it close the book, so that the next time their assistant, that's what is looked at. Yeah, because if they don't complete the course, they drop out, they fail it, the next assistant can't be given to them until they show that they did pass it, or something like that, if they retake the class. That's what the scholarship application, eligibility application says. Virginia? I think that the student is here today, so if she wants to introduce herself, she can.
Hello. Hi, my name's Nicole Curly. My clans are Ya'edina and Tachitni, Isla'ne, Tapaha, and Hanarani. I am coming from the Sinajini family. Let's see, so you guys wanna know what I'm going to school for? I am actually getting my BA in Governance for coming for about a whole year now. And with COVID going on, last two years, I've been sitting on virtually as well. So, besides, you know, going to school, I do also advocate for the accessibility for the Navajo Nations. So, we have an organization called Empowering Indigenous Accessibility, which is pertaining our elderly, our youth, to have accessibility on the Navajo Reservation, along with festivities. So, we have a little group. So, yeah, I'm here, and I applied for financial assistance. The reason why is, I don't see a lot of applicants coming in to apply for these types of funding that is given. And it kind of saddens me that there's not a lot of our generation not applying for, you know, these types of assistance that is given. So, I recommend you guys to reach out to, you know, your grand, your daughters, your sons, and, you know, who is ever going to school, come out and, you know, support. And I feel like I'm the youngest here, and it bothers me to see that, I only see nothing but elderly and, you know, older people. There's not a lot of younger generations that get involved with our chapters. So, yeah, so I am me here.
Thank you. Thank you, Sichaco. Aid of student financial aid, Ni Hattila. And like she said, for the chapter, under the chapter, it kind of gets replenished and stuff. Sometimes it's not all used up, and it just gets carried over. But sometimes we do get all the financial aid out. But under the new, there was funding that was given out to veterans, auto scholarships. Scholarships. So, under that, we do, there's money to assist students, financial aid, it's not scholarship. Per se, it's not really called scholarship, but financial aid. So just let your students, your that there's an opportunity, if they're a voter, if they're under 18, their parents have to be voters at the chapter. That's what's required of them. So whoever seeks financial aid, send them to the chapter and tell them, "Go find out about auto assistance", so that they can come and use that money up. Because that money is supposed to, the ones that are given under ARPA funds, that has to be expended by 2026, I think is what they were saying. So help us spend that money. Okay, so, any other questions, comments, concerns? For full time is 600, for part time is 450, I think it was. Yeah, I think that's how it was worded. So, okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands, please. A pose? Abstain? TBK 2023-317-005 passes with 30 approval, zero oppose, 12 abstain. Okay, do we have any other resolutions? That would be it for the resolutions, and then we go on to the reports. As the chapter president, I am just gonna report and let you know the food was catered today by Black Grill Catering, Wajieko, from Fort Defiance. Call, Lilia. We never really get calls from anybody. We're gonna go and prepare the chicken, the chicken, it's the turkey dinner for you guys. Nant called Lilia last week. I can cater your Thanksgiving dinner. I do this for chapter houses all over Navajo Reservation. And for 50 people, this much. Then I said, maybe add 10 more and see how much that is. So, this catering costs $875 compared to over $1,000 that we spent last year for the Thanksgiving dinner. So it was savings to us, so I told Vernon, "Go ahead and have them do it, and have them feed us." So, "So how was your dinner?" "I liked it, it was good." So instead of us cooking for you, what we decided to do was, as chapter officials, chapter staff, and club C members, we each provided a turkey for your door prizes today. If you were wondering why you were getting tickets, that's the reason why. So, turkey is chapter house has door prizes. So that's what we did today. And ham? Oh, turkey and some ham. So that's what we did. Yeah, that's what I said. So, we're working on our ARPA fund, money for the renovations, for the house wiring, electrification, and for the warehouse. We're working on the money to be brought down to the chapter level, to be put into the chapter account. So we're working with Vernon, providing all the information. We had an interview with the ARPA Fund Office. What was it called? Fiscal Recovery Fund Office. We had an interview with them last week. They asked us a lot of questions, mainly pertaining how we handle money, how we handle grants, what the requirements are, if we know what the requirements are, how experienced we are with the grants, proposals, if we were any part of those kind of processes. So they asked us those type of questions. So they said that they were gonna get back to us pretty soon here, if everything goes oh, and then we're supposed to come up with some scope of work for each of the project that is under our ARPA funds, and come up with the scope of project and everything. But no, that's all, he sent all of that last week to them. So now we're just waiting for their response, because what they wanted to, what she said they wanted to know was, what was it called? Hold on, I think I wrote it down. What are compliance, what compliance risk we have, whether we have low, mid, or high? Draw down those needs to your account, and then based on the scope of work and everything that you set in place. So, that's what we're waiting on. Although there are there are some resolutions that are gonna be looked at within, for the December, for December's meeting. So please do come to December's meeting. Although Christmas is so we'll be having a Christmas dinner for the chapter meeting next month. And then, at the same time, there are plans. They keep giving us information to get wood, either as individuals, or as for a community. Now that we have the chapter truck, I don't know if any of you have seen it driven around, but it's parked over here. The chapter truck, we picked it up three weeks ago, about three weeks ago. The trailer, DA, it had, one, a little minor damage to it, and I told them that I didn't want to take it with that, it needs to be fixed. I don't already want to be spending money and repairing that, that's not our fault. So they're gonna repair it sometime this week, and then we'll be told to go pick it up. So we do have the chapter trailer, and then the chapter truck over there. And with that, many opportunities open, like wood hauling, like going to Coconino County Forest and getting a whole load of wood and bringing it back for the community. No, those type of things are opened up to us now. Although, other than that, everything, if you have any questions about anything, about chapter budgets, or anything like that, I welcome you to come to the office, and we'll explain to you what all those are. I noticed that on Facebook, there was a post that was made about audits. A, I'm here to tell you, yes, we were audit, yes, we had those nine findings. But compared to a lot of other chapters, those are minor findings. Those are findings that each and every chapter has, because a lot of the, no matter how Navajo Nation says, we're like this, we're like that, a lot of the things that they have chapters, policies and procedures, a lot of them doesn't cover a lot of the stuff, such as property, like this one over here, vehicles, especially as a chapter, certified chapter. Navajo Nation, non-certified chapter, eh, yeah, Navajo Nation has risk management. It's already put under them. But for us, here certified chapter risk management can only do so much. They can only provide so much. Because then, whatever that was open to non-certified chapter and to me, I think that's not fair. I think to me, that is that is not the way ought to run because we're still a chapter under Navajo Nation. We're still running by Navajo Nation policy and procedure. We still have the staff that are under Navajo Nation. It's just we're certified. So, a lot of these things, I, we're continuing to work out all the kinks so that we, as a certified chapter, can strive and be able. I even say, we can go after the same fund as Navajo Nation. We can go after, we can advocate before the Navajo Nation Council, before RDC, as they say, who regulates on businesses. Before them and advocate for our own budget. They don't want that. They still want to control that part of it. So, eh, no, they don't fully let us be a certified chapter because they still want their hand in the pot. So, to be fully certified, just like I always say, to be fully sovereign, we have to do business and run business the way we want to run it. Rather than having government coming in and saying, "This is how you should do it." "Oh, yeah, you're certified." We're like a we're like a stepchild now. We're just put to the side. Okay, well, that's a challenge for us to do that. Let's go and do that. Let's go, go after funding for this and that. Let's go after this and everything that we can so that our community can thrive, so that we can sit here one day and say, "Hey, we're a certified chapter. Look what we did as a certified chapter." We didn't have to depend on you, Navajo Nation, to give us the money. We went out and got our own money and got the things done that we needed to get done. Just as like this ARPA fund. ARPA fund was given about a couple years ago, a year and a half ago. And here, at this day and age, we're still in this process where the money is not given to us yet. By the time the money, we're supposed to encumber all this money by the time June comes, June twenty-fourth. We're supposed to have this money in the bank account so that we can start using it to, to expend what we need to do. Eh, we only have up until twenty twenty-six to, to, to use all that money. But here we are, seven months away, June, and we still are sitting here wanting that money to come down so that we can start work. So, eh, the slow process of, of things, that's what frustrates me a lot. But anyways, that's all I have to report. We just keep on, keep on keeping on, keep working and keep advocating and even though we might butt heads with Navajo Nation, we still, we're gonna still do that. Just as long as we do what is best for our community. That's all I have to report. Chancey? Deller?
So, for those that don't know me, she, Deller Curly. I'm from the Sina Jenny family. So, I am your secretary treasurer. I've been in this office for about two and three months, I think, two years and three months. With that, this is my first term in office as the chapter official. You know, there's a lot of good things that I've learned throughout this experience, my tenure as a chapter official. I mean, again, like President said, is that we butt head with Navajo Nation and we constantly do. I think my frustration is way up there, too. And I'm really glad to be a part of this. I'm not trying to make a campaign speech or anything, so don't, don't think about that. But I'm just saying, like, I just wanted to tell you, because I, there's a lot of new faces here that, you know, I don't think, really know who I am. And so, I just wanted to go ahead and get this opportunity to let you guys know who I am. So, I'm from here, graduated high school. I am a USMC veteran and I work in the communications field. That's why you kind of see all these things, all the computer stuff, websites and all that stuff, is being up to date. Is because of my experience. And so, I, I'm trying to make it to where it's convenient for you as community members. There's a lot of good things that I've been hoping to provide to the community. Like one initiative that Madam Chair stated was that we're wanting to get wood out here for the community. So, I'm currently in talks with several nonprofits to try to get some woods out here before the snow hits. And so, that's something that we're wanting to get done. Again, it's a good opportunity for us, being that we're certified. We have our chapter truck and our chapter trailer. And we have, have the opportunity to go out there and gather wood for the community and also coal, so. I'm here, I'm available. You guys have my, should have my number. It's on the website and also my emails on the website. So, if you guys have any questions, comments, issues, I'm here as your community leader. So, please let me know if there's anything that I can do to help you. Other than that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, you have anything to say?
Thank you guys for coming for Thanksgiving. You guys, I, I love seeing all you guys at the trash and everything like that and helping out and everything. Thanks to you guys coming out again.
Good morning. Oh, my God. No, this afternoon, no, one. Say, Vernon Williams, the chapter manager here, the new one. And my probation period, like she was telling you, my probation period ended in October, so I'm officially permanent. So, if you guys are gonna consider that. But anyways, I'm the new manager since the end of July and all the way to now. So, my first year, going into my first year, I'm developing all these skills, budget allocations, carryovers and all this stuff on my own with assistance of people that helped me out. So, I appreciate that a lot from all these other officials. They're always helping me out with all this stuff and that. They've been here longer than I have. But I've been here, this chapter, for almost four years now, so. As I would up, I would up the steps. I was a project aide, would up all the way down, all the way up to another, I was a planner, office aide. And then also, I went to AA, administrative assistant. And then here, I'm a manager, so I went up the steps to become where I am. So, I know the process of everyone, every position role here. So, we have three position roles. I know every one of them. So, and also, I have a degree. I have a degree in business operation and accounting. So, I did, did my training, did my schooling. So, so I'm like, I'm new to everybody here, so. Like, I'm all familiar. I know everybody by my faces and everything, but as you can see, I'm not related to anybody here, blood wise or anything like that, so hopefully you guys understand that. And I'm originally from, I graduated in Gannato, so go Hornets. Well, anyways, I, I've been here, so I just wanted to introduce myself in that way. So, as Madam President here was saying about the for the audit, if you guys see those stuff on the audits on the, the Facebook and everything, remember, these audits, they wouldn't, they're findings, right? That's what findings, that's what, that happens through, ours is a lot of it, just, just similar stuff. There's multiple add-ons there that, that meaning only one. So, so they add-on to, to specify, "This is what you're doing wrong," or you're doing, it's just the same thing, but the only thing is that when you see these audits on Facebook, there's a corrective action that these guys don't, that these guys don't show. So, every audit, you have to complete an audit to have it publicized. When you like, put it in public to, to publicize through social media, they have to have a meaning. They have to have a corrective action, just the way to do it. You cannot just, like, audit, if it's a finding, I mean, you cannot get until it's completed and then you can do that. So, so they don't, they don't put their corrective action at the end. So, you gotta understand that. They'll just look and tell and say, "Oh, this is what they did. This is what they did." "That's what I see and read and gossip." But there's a corrective action at the end. So, make sure you see everything on it, what the chapter did to proceed and complete this audit. That's the only way you can do this. So, so that's why I just wanted to justify that a little bit more. So, hopefully you guys understand that. So, I, I, I vouch for all these chapters. They're getting people, like, getting audits and everything. They have a lot of findings and everything like that. There's always that corrective action that they don't show. So, I don't mind, I mean, according to me, according to ours, nine findings. Literally, if you put it all together, it's only like three, three findings. And they just justify it just deeper to get into all this stuff. So, that's all I wanted to say, guys. So, you guys want to do this? So, let's, let's do these. Yeah? Yes, it's simple stuff. It's strategic planning. It's basically, like, for ours, a lot of cash receipts. In ours, that's basic training for the office. So, so that's general, and that's why we do, that's why we go through strategic training for our staffs to, to learn the FMS and then the, the operation, the business of operation. So, that's, that's
So, another thing, too, is you want to also keep in mind is that with that audit back there, I didn't discuss anything about the audit. But again, it's publicizes for you guys' ability to read online. I'll go ahead and post the link on our website as well. But it's available to the public. And again, with each and every year, we're supposed to have two-year audits, bi-yearly audits. And so, you'll probably be seeing a lot more things. The thing here is, everyone has to understand is that those audits, we're paying an auditing firm to find issues with our, what we're doing so that way we can improve ourselves as a chapter, as officials, and as the administration. So, that way, we can make sure that we're properly maintaining the books. Currently, right now, I believe, again, like with those nine audits, you know, nine findings, there are learning opportunities for us. There are learning opportunities as us, as the chapters, to remain in compliance. And so, I just want to make sure that, you know, we all understand that. During those times when we had the, during the months that we were being audited on, you also have to remember the tenure that was going on here at the school, at the chapter. We had, I think, four or three office assistants, and then we had a couple administrative assistants. So, the turnaround time here was, was quite, you know, there was a lot of turnaround here. And so, that comes into retraining the new person, making sure that they understand the MIP system. The MIP system here is really complicated. It's complex. It's an old system. It can't be done like QuickBooks where you can just go ahead and put in a couple receipts here and there and then reconcile stuff. There's a lot of things in that system that is really complex to where someone has to be specifically trained to be in that system. And so, you're having to look at the three new administrative assistants having to be retrained in that. Someone could have missed it, you know, during those times. And so, that's the reason why we probably had findings on these things, because there's something that we missed. And it's a good opportunity for us to look back and saying, "Where did we go wrong in our training? Is there something that we missed? Is there something that we could improve on?" So, these are learning opportunities. They shouldn't be used as a form of, "Oh, the chapter's like this, the chapter's like that. They're mismanaging funds. They're mismanaging this." I mean, yeah, there's a lot of other chapter houses out there that do that. But with us, you know, I think we are in a good state. We're in a good area. We do have a good chapter manager here now who has a degree. And, you know, I think we're, we're working well hand in hand. I also have my bachelor's in business administration, so just so you guys know that. We keep, we keep in constant communication along with Madam President's experience and being in, in office for a number of years. So, just so you guys know, we're here to ensure that our stuff is good to go. And that's, that's just what I want to let you guys know.
Okay, so eh, so if you have any questions, feel free to come and ask us. We'll be sitting down with you and let you know. That's what I like. Go, go find out from the horse's mouth. And I guess I'm the horse's mouth, so you can find out from me. So, eh, like I always say, I welcome questions and I also, you know, welcome any ideas or anything like that. If it's to better our chapter, I, I, I'm here to listen to you guys, so. This is not the only audit we did. There were other audits that we had. And this audit that was posted, AKA, it was internal, internal audit. And it's a part of the process for being a certified chapter. As a certified chapter, we have to have our chapter audit, internal audit, every two years, bi-annual. So, we'll be getting ready for the next audit. And this audit, they pay for it, but we're also supposed to do bi-annual audit. It's either internal or external. External, eh, we have to pay for it. We have to put money aside to pay for that audit. So, eh, a couple years ago, we had an external one, and then we were getting ready for another one. That this internal one came up and they paid for it. So, and, and I think that we did pretty good, okay, because there's only nine findings. And those nine findings, we already did a corrective action plan for it. We already corrected it. Because those are sort of, kind of, the same findings that all chapter experiences. Because at all chapters, there's only two permanent positions. The chapter manager or coordinator for non-certified. The AA administration assistant or office specialist. Those are the only two permanent positions. So, one of the findings that they, they dinged us is on separation of duties. There's only two permanent positions, but the process takes three people. So, what we have here is an office assistant, which takes care of the third-person process, separation of duties. So, these separation of duties. We were talking amongst the officials with the chapter manager. We said, "We actually need three to four permanent..." the chapter manager, we said, we actually need three to four permanent positions at the chapter in order to satisfy this separation of duty. [speaking foreign language 0:23:11]. I don't, eh de, eh go eh. PEP are permanent, um, non-permanent, they're temporary positions. Every time we hire a new office assistant, we have to retrain that person again for however long. We want to keep some of these positions as permanent positions so that we don't have to keep retraining people. I don't eh go go eh eh, we'll eliminate one of those, um, um, things that, you know, but it has already been, um, corrected it. And even before we went before your RDC, the process they're supposed to do, we haven't even done, we haven't even gone before RDC yet. They haven't even called us to go over there to talk about these findings. What then, oh, oh, [inaudible 0:23:33]. That's already, what, almost a year now? And we're still waiting. So anyways, that's it, that's enough, we'll go on. So, I don't eh eh, I don't [inaudible 0:23:41]. I don't, I don't in the corner, Thanksgiving is coming, don't be over, don't, don't overeat. Don't be all [inaudible 0:23:49] out by the time November ends, because December is still around the corner, Christmas. I don't eh, the, um, announcements and, um, uh, scheduled meetings, eh de, [inaudible 0:23:54]. Um, food distribution, eh de, eh de, eh de, eh de. I don't in the, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, go check on your elders to make sure they have water, food, um, woods. I don't eh, [inaudible 0:24:01]. Oh, raffle, raffle, you're losing your turkey. Go ahead, start. Zero one seven eight zero three three. The last three numbers is zero three three. Ah. Next one. The numbers are all the same to eight, right? Zero one seven eight? The last three numbers, zero nine. Zero two nine. Zero two zero. Another one. How many la? Next one. Zero three nine. Yeah, I, I told him that, yeah. Okay, next one. Zero two eight. Zero two eight. Zero two eight. Nobody? Zero two one. Zero one six. Going once. Twice. Gone. Next number. Zero three zero. Zero four zero. Zero four zero. We got a winner. Next number. Next number, zero one nine. Zero three seven. Zero two three. Zero two three. Zero two three. Going once. Going twice. Twice. Next one. Zero three one. That winner. Next number. Next number, zero three five. Zero three five, oh, we got one. Oh, right there. Got one. Next number, zero two five. Zero two five, going once. Twice. Zero three two. Zero one eight. Going once. Twice. Next one. Zero three four. Zero three four. Once. Zero three four, right there. Now he said he'll donate it to someone. Give it to gurs. The quee more. One. How many more? Zero three eight. Zero three eight. This is gonna conclude our, our meeting. Uh, motion by Jamie, uh, second by Pearl Smith, all those in favor, raise your hands. Abstain, I'm gonna put zero. Okay, meeting adjourned at one thirty-five. Have a good day, everyone. Thank you all, have a good day, happy Thanksgiving, y'all.
You guys have a wonderful day.